All right, it's seven o'clock. If you all would stand for the budge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the principle of the reading and justice for all. Thank you so much.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here.
Councilmember Morciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No ma'am.
And is it all right with the rest of the council if we skip announce, uh, let's see. I, we have no announcements and presentations, correct?
No ma'am.
Okay. Would it be all right with the rest of the council if we skip items of residence interests and just do that with our normal October meeting?
Please.
Thank you. Um, I have no comment cards for items not on the agenda, so we will go right through that. Does the city manager have a report?
No report.
Okay then.
Lock and roll.
We are at the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Motion, nope. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're on to public hearing. This is the fastest meeting we have run in a long time.
You don't get too far ahead of yourself ma'am.
I know. Alright, so we are now one minute into our meeting and we are at Resolution forty-eight. May I please have the clerk read the title?
Resolution forty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a tax levy and millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, directing the city clerk to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Palm Beach County property appraiser and tax collector within three days after its adoption, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Alright, so I will open the hearing. Does, do we need another presentation from the staff?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Actually, we haven't had a presentation on this, have we?
We have had a presentation on, on the budget, yes.
On the budget, yes, but...
There's no separate presentation on the resolution. It's all, it goes hand in hand with the, the budget ordinance, so...
Okay.
It has been posted on the website?
It has been posted on the website. Uh, there have been no changes since the first reading of, of the ordinance on September sixth. Um, so at the council's pleasure, we could do another forty-five minute presentation or just go right to the required action here tonight.
Well, before we go to the required action, Barbara Grossman, you put in a card, which item, uh, which budget item did you want to speak on because you didn't actually identify which item?
I wanted to report as a public, uh, just an announcement.
Ah, okay, um...
On another has to do with the budget.
So, why don't you then come and take your three minutes now? Oh, good. And then, Alan, if we have a, a presentation or an addition, we'll come back to that.
My name is Barbara Grossman, twenty-one thousand Portofino Circle, Palm Beach Gardens. And I just want to let you know, um, I was at early voting, probably almost every day. And while I was there, I had people standing next to me, jumping up and down with yes for term limits. We already have term limits. I spoke to these people and I know they're getting paid, they told me, and not directly through the council. And I like to know if there's any money left. I understand it was almost a hundred thousand dollars. If it was going to be put back into the budget, if there was anything left, I know that it was put through some LLCs and some PACs, but it really came from here and they told me you were getting fifteen dollars an hour. And I was there every day, watching them jump up and down and I was watching my tax money fly away. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alan, is there anything else you'd like to add? Not, not, not on Barbara's but on the, uh, resolution at hand? Resolution forty-eight?
No ma'am.
Does anyone have any questions for Alan?
The, the two changes, that's part of the next one, that's not part of this one, right? The, um, extra duty fund and all of that?
That's the third ordinance.
That's the third ordinance.
That's, that's covered under Ordinance twenty-three. That's a separate budget amendment to the current fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
Okay. Okay, so, nothing additional? No additional questions? I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion that we pass the budget.
Okay.
Just, so, council is aware, state statutes are very particular about the process, the order of things that have to be done. Um, if you look at the screen before you...
Okay.
Before the, the resolution is passed that adopts the millage, uh, the council needs to, uh, make the motion. And we basically have to announce what the rate is, the rollback rate, the percent change over the rollback rate. So, uh, staff would request that a motion be made, uh, in conjunction with the first bullet point here.
Okay.
Basically stating that. And then we can go in and approve the resolution, adopting the millage rate. And then, once those steps are done, then we can approve, uh, the budget, Ordinance twenty-one on second reading.
So would you like each one read individually then? And voted on individually?
Yes. First, we just need a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a proposed millage rate, just what it says there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt the proposed operating millage rate for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen of five point five five zero zero mils and a debt service millage rate of point zero five zero three.
I, I hate to interrupt, um, but if you, they're actually, the motion that we need to have read is actually right on the screen. So it's a little different than what you were saying. I'm sorry. That is actually...
The second part?
The first one.
I recommend, okay.
Sorry.
I recommend a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a proposed millage rate of five point six zero zero three mils, which includes a debt millage of point zero five zero three and an operating rate of five point five five mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of five point three one five four by four point four one percent.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And our next, our next move, Alan?
Uh, would be to approve Resolution forty-eight, two thousand and eighteen.
Do we need to read it?
Just the motion to adopt the resolution.
You've already read, we've already had the title read into the record. That's already been done. So now you would just need to go to the next step and actually have a motion to approve Resolution forty-eight, twenty eighteen.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution forty-eight, twenty eighteen.
Second.
And we, you would like just to have that...
Setting for the final millage rate for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, at five point six zero zero three mils.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we can adopt the budget, uh, by the motion to, uh, approve Ordinance twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen on second reading.
And, and we do need to read that ordinance title.
Yes, we do.
Ordinance twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, providing a conflicts clause and separability clause, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen on second reading, adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen and nineteen.
Second? Somebody second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alrighty, now we are on to Ordinance twenty-three, correct? Yeah, have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and seventeen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and eighteen inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing.
Okay, um, Ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen, are a couple of proposed amendments to the current fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen budget. And just to give a little bit of, uh, the background of what we're proposing to do here, we have, uh, two areas basically that we're recommending to amend the budget. The first has to do with, uh, the fund, fund balance that's, uh, currently in our extra duty, uh, police, uh, extra duty fund. And the other is a, a requested amendment or journal entries to, that we need to make to record the accounting transactions, uh, some, from some recent capital lease purchases that we made for various fire rescue equipment. With regards to the, uh, proposed transfer to the general fund from the extra duty fund, um, just a little bit more background, uh, the ex, as you know, the extra duty fund accounts for payments that are made to off-duty officers and then we in turn account for the reimbursements that we bill out to the different entities back into this fund. Um, we do charge an administrative fee. Over the years, this fund has built up to a fund balance of a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, with that in mind, we, as you know, we had, uh, the recent contract, uh, with the officers that was effective in August. Uh, the estimated cost for that contract for August and September is about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So we're requesting to transfer the five hundred thousand, allocate two hundred and seventy-seven thousand to police department personnel line item, uh, to offset that cost for the rest of this year. And then the balance, uh, we're proposing to transfer to the budget stabilization, which as you know, in the budget for fiscal year nineteen that we just approved, the budget stabilization had a balance of just under seven hundred thousand dollars. So again, as I just explained, this is a recommended action. Uh, by doing this, we're not only, we'd be covering the estimated cost of the contract adjustment for the rest of this year, but also increasing the budget stabilization balance to just about nine hundred thousand dollars by, uh, adding another two hundred and twenty-two thousand to that account. Uh, the other item that we're requesting to, uh, adjust has to do, as I said earlier, with recording capital lease purchases under government accounting standards on the fund financial statements. Uh, when we take delivery of assets that we've entered into capital lease arrangements, we have to, uh, make an, it's a really a non-cash entry. Uh, we have to record the financing source of the, the amount of the money that was borrowed and on the other side of the ledger, the expenditure. It doesn't affect our budget. Uh, the budgets, uh, will be, the debt service is budgeted, uh, as it becomes due and payable. Uh, again, this is just on the fund financial statement. So it's just a housekeeping thing that we need to do. And just to give you an idea of the equipment, uh, that we're recording, we had two pumper's that we received in the current fiscal year for about one million three hundred and sixty thousand. We had three rescue, uh, trucks for about nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then we had two, uh, brush trucks for about four hundred thousand dollars. So, again, it's just an accounting cleanup thing that we have to do to make the financial statements agree with a budgetary basis. So, uh, with that, uh, staff is recommending approval of Ordinance twenty-three on first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So I have no cards on this. I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second, please?
I move that we adopt Ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Alan, just to clear up for information purposes, the extra duty fund has nothing to do with the payments that will go to the officers that are protecting the schools, 'cause that, that, they are doing overtime? That was allotted separate?
They, they will be paid just overtime, correct? Not, not through the extra duty.
But not through the extra duty fund, overtime? Okay.
Those fees are char, are set by the, uh, the collective bargaining agreement that they're paid and it goes through this separate fund, so it doesn't hit the regular operating budget.
Okay.
Unlike the overtime, which for the, uh, police, for the schools, that, school duties.
A different, okay. Also, um, we had budgeted in for the police department raise into the budget. If this is going to cover that, that money will just stay in the general fund or where it is in the budget and next year we're all over?
Well, this money that we're moving is not, was not budgeted, okay? We budgeted for next year in the budget for eighteen nineteen that we, we adopted.
But we didn't budget for this year, so this is going...
We adopted this budget for eighteen, that this was going to happen in August. So this movement of this money right now covers the August and September that was not budgeted or was not even known when we put the budget together.
When, what, how are we going to cover that before this, though? Or we knew this was going to be there?
We didn't, I mean, it, it's fortunate that we had this money and we were just going to have to absorb it. And basically, it was already factored in when we did our estimates of revenues and expenses and it gave us the balance of whatever our projected reserve was going to be. So we did factor it in when we put it, our budget together and it would have just been absorbed by, by operations.
Okay. So that's great that we're going to have extra. It's, feels good to know that the, the reserve fund is going to be higher than we expected it to be, especially looking at the chart going forward. It might keep us a little bit higher. Okay, thank you. Matthew, any questions? Mark?
Do we have a, an estimated balance that you would like to keep in that extra duty fund? I know on the, there's not any policy in per se, but we have certain policies about the budget stabilization fund and the unassigned...
No, there's, there's no specific policy for that, Mr. Morciano. Um, it's just, again, this is some, I've been here over seventeen years and we've never done anything with the fund. So it's, you know, fortunately, we had this little bit of money sitting there and it made sense to address it now, but we don't have a formal policy going forward. But it takes a long time for, because of the amount of administrative fees that we charge for balance to really develop in there.
So the fund will essentially have seventeen thousand dollars in it when it's done and we'll just leave it and see if it accrues overtime. Okay, thank you.
Carl, any questions? I'm good. So, since we have no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. We are on to resolutions. I have no cards for this. Actually, I apologize. I do have a card, but it is under the resolution of sixty, so pa... May I have the clerk read the title when she's sitting in her chair? Since she doesn't have her sneakers on.
Resolution sixty, two thousand and eighteen, excuse me, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, regarding the sale of the city-owned property, excuse me, at ninety-two ninety Park Lane, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, also known as the Hilltop Property, and providing for the City Council to recommend and select the buyer whose offer is determined by the City Council, I'm sorry, whose offer is determined by the City Council to best serve the current and future needs of the community and the residents of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the letter of intent and sale agreement, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Um, we, I don't believe we have a staff presentation. We all have received information in our packet. Uh, I do have one comment card from, uh, Mr. Craig. If he'd like to come up, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm Steve Craig. I represent Gardens Business Center, Palm Beach, which is one of the bidders for the property. Uh, before I start, I would like to thank the city manager and the staff for all the hours they've spent with us trying to solve the various problems with this property. And also, thank Seacoast for the many meetings we've had with them, half of which we're laughing, the other half crying. Anyway, the, the Hilltop Property has remained, uh, vacant for quite some time and it has many problems. We've spent the last year and a half working on those problems, trying to solve them all.
Could you speak a little louder?
We've been working on that for the last year and a half to solve all those problems. Took us a year and a quarter to convince the county to move the road to the east so that the development, we have better development. Um, so, we've worked very closely with the city. We've posed a, uh, business park that's about a hundred, three hundred and twenty-five thousand feet and we proposed, now we're proposing a commercial center of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand feet, depending on which one works. Um, we know there's still additional problems. We have to work out problems with Seacoast. Um, we think we're the best for the project. We agree to dedicate the road to the city and to the county. Uh, we'll create the greatest tax base for the county. And we agree to ensure that the city and Seacoast get all of the things that they need in reference to this road alignment and the easements. And we would volunteer to work with the city and Seacoast to put in our contract whatever conditions the city or Seacoast would like us to have to make sure that all of those things that the city needs and the Seacoast needs are taken care of. Uh, the county, the city, I think, wants to get an entrance up at the north end of the city property so the fire rescue can get in. The county's not agreeing to that. Seacoast has so many issues that it is willing to spend taxpayers' funds to protect the well field and to make sure that all of their requirements are satisfied. We hope to save those taxpayer dollars by agreeing to put in our contract whatever Seacoast wants us to put in there, including agreeing not to dedicate the right-of-way on the city property to the county until such time as Seacoast and the city are a hundred percent satisfied with those transactions. And we have, uh, renderings of those projects if you'd like to see them, but, uh, and I'm open for questions if you have any. And I think I'm out of time.
We're actually going to, if, if you don't mind, have a seat.
Thank you.
And Kumra, you have a presentation, don't you? I think, I think we probably should have one. And then Wendy Link, I know you also just gave me a card, so would you, since we'll just do, take the cards now and then we'll have Kumra do a presentation. We're a little out of order, but I did have one more card, so name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. My name is Wendy Link, seventy-eight sixteen, seventy-eight sixteen Sieplechase Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Johan and Dogga Creek. Uh, they have also put in a proposal. Uh, they are looking to do a racket facility on the property and it's, would be very exciting. It would include, uh, tennis, indoor and outdoor tennis, and pickleball, which has become very excited, very, uh, very exciting and, and growing sport here. We think it would do a lot to add excitement and to add real value to that area. It's a different use and I think that there will be things that would grow from that. Certainly would provide tax dollars to the city. And in terms of working with Seacoast, we did sit down and have a meeting with Seacoast and understand their concerns with the wells, certainly understand what we have to do with the property. We also did bring a, a concept drawing, if, if you all would like to see that as well, uh, which, as I mentioned, will involve the indoor courts, the outdoor courts, and, uh, starting with an academy. Uh, Johan Creek has, uh, one of the best academies in the state of Florida and, uh, he'll continue to, uh, have that here, which will bring us a lot of excitement to the City of Palm Beach Gardens. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but wanted to just let you know that we are very interested and excited to have our project on that property.
Thank you. We'll, actually, we'll have questions after Kumra. Is that all right with everyone? Okay. Kumra, how are you today?
Oh, I'm fine, ma'am. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, Kumra, Purchasing and Contracts Director. This is a very short presentation. And it's Resolution sixty, twenty eighteen. Um, background to this resolution is that in May, um, this City Council executed a contract with Colliers International, um, for real estate brokerage services to sell the property on ninety-two ninety, um, Park Lane. The property's known as the Hilltop Property. Um, prior to the sale of the property, we got a appraisal from SF Holden and the property's appraised at one point seven three five million dollars based on certain changes to the zoning. This is the property. This is Lake Catherine to the west. Um, this is Seacoast Utilities property that's being used as a public safety training facility. And this is the residential community to the east. This is the Gardens Business Center is to the south of here, down here. The city has received three offers for the purchase of the property from Seacoast Utilities, um, a consortium represented by Johan Creek, who was a former world-ranked tennis player, and of course, the owners of the adjoining property to the south. Seacoast Utilities offered eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The Johan Creek Consortium offered one point six five million dollars. And the Gardens Business Center offered one million and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this is a summary of the offers. It also has some additional information in the documents provided to you. Um, Seacoast wants to maintain, expand and maintain the well fields. Um, Johan Creek Consortium would like to operate a tennis academy. And as, um, the, Mr. Craig explained, the owners of the property to the south would like to do a commercial development on the property. And what the city administration is seeking is guidance and a recommendation from council as to who should be given the opportunity to develop the property, based on the fact that a public utility also has an interest in the property and has existing wells on the property. Um, so, when you make the recommendation tonight, we will execute, the city manager will execute a letter of intent with that buyer. Any questions?
I'm sure there are. So, I will bring it back for discussion, actually. Abby, do I need a motion? What do I need here?
Well, you have a resolution, so, I mean, we're seeking guidance, so we would do a motion based on of, you know, recommendations and, and the guidance that the council would like to see staff move forward with.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
All right, ma'am. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll bring it back for discussion. And I'm sure there are questions, so... Rochelle?
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll start by saying, I am the council's representative to the Water Resources Task Force for the county. So, future resources for the city are always in the back of my mind and the wells that are on that property currently for Seacoast and the maintenance of them and the, and the future of those is very important. Um, I'm, would love the idea of a tennis facility. I think it's, it's a great, it, it would be a, a great addition to the city to have that here. I'm a little confused about the reasoning on this location when we have great park situation, uh, both out west and locally in District Park. Uh, to me, that sounds like a, a, a great place to put it, but, um, so I'm a little confused about that being in the business area that it is and in the utility area that already exists. And, um, I question the need for another business park. Um, the residents of the city are very vocal about our constantly building, building, building. And if we have the ability to be forward-thinking and, and look ahead to future needs instead, I think it's something that, that we need to take a look at as well as, as putting more building.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I do have one question. If it were to go to Seacoast, would they be able to resell the property in the future and turn it over to make a profit on it to one of these other entities in the future? Or could that be in the contract so that it, if it's going to be voted by the council that we want the water in the future, that they have to maintain it for water purposes only?
That's a good question. I don't know how that works. Okay, they're discussing. Matthew?
I have a bunch of questions. Um...
Oh, hold on one second.
We have an answer.
Go ahead.
Did you want, did you want to answer?
No, I want you to answer.
I'm sure that you could always offer some type of reverter clause or some kind of protection as far as condition of sales concerned, uh, that if it were going to be offered for sale, the city could have the first, first option on property, if, if that would be acceptable. But that is something that could be done.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. Um, the, uh, just so everybody knows, the spread between what Seacoast is willing to pay, which is eight hundred and sixty-five thousand and what, uh, Johan's willing to pay is, uh, he wants to pay one nine six hundred and fifty thousand. So you're talking about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar spread. Additionally, if Seacoast buys the property, um, we wouldn't be able to receive taxes, property taxes from it as opposed to a private business. So, those are things that, uh, concern me from an economic point of view. But if you look at the other side of it, we're talking about our water, um, and the supply of water to our community. And I certainly wouldn't want to harm our community into the future as a result of that. So I would really wonder from a practical point of view as far as our re, natural resources, which we have to protect, and also from a... which we have to protect, and also from an economic point of view, because it's, we use about 51%, Palm Beach Gardens uses about 51% of the water that is sold by Seacoast, so if they have to incur further expenditures in the future, we're gonna feel that as well. So my question is, and I would love to hear from somebody from Seacoast, my question is, why should we, we're giving up $750,000, why should we do this? What benefits do we as a community, do I as someone who, a resident who lives here, what benefits will we accrue that make it worth us not picking up the $750,000 today?
First of all, my name's Rim Bishop. I'm Executive Director of Seacoast Utility Authority, and thank you for the opportunity appeared before you tonight. The difference between Seacoast ownership of the parcel and private ownership of the parcel, private ownership and development of the parcel, is that with private ownership of the parcel, we've probably got another 30, maybe 35 years' worth of use of that well field. With Seacoast ownership, we have well over 100 years. And whenever we have to back out of that well field, whenever that day comes when we can no longer use that well field, it's a $3 million, $4 million hit, 60% of which is borne by the citizens of Palm Beach Gardens. We actually sell, excuse me for the correction, but we actually sell about 60% of our water in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. That's an updated figure. So that's the best answer I can offer to your question. Avoidance of extreme additional costs when we lose the use of the well field.
In terms of the well field, what are, in terms of the, this piece of property, what are you planning, if Seacoast purchases this, what are you planning to do with, with that property? What are you gonna do with it?
We're gonna use it exactly the same way it's been used for the last 50 years, including the period of time when it was actually in our ownership some time ago. And that is for well field, and that means not only operating the wells that are there now, but also drilling future wells. And by the way, that's the difference between the 30 years and the 100 years. We can continue to drill replacement wells on the property if we have unfettered access to the property. So that, that's the answer to that question.
If they put a tennis facility there, would you, and they allowed you to, to also put wells on the property, do you need the entire property, or could you do it around a tennis facility?
The more of the property that we have, the longer that water resource is going to be available to the citizens.
Is the proposed well drawing water from the superficial aquifer?
It is. Those wells are about 170 feet deep.
And are you gonna increase the allowed water allocation from the South Water Management District?
We are not.
Anything else?
Yeah, I might have some more, just let me just look. Yeah, we can go back and forth. Go, go ahead.
Mark.
Thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure, thank you.
I'm actually pretty intrigued by all of these different options, but I just wanna stick with the Seacoast question and the water supply questions for now. As the city continues to grow, I mean, the eastern part of the city is somewhat built out. The western part of the city is going to be, starting to be developed as we go forward. What is Seacoast's plans for the western community, and does this particular well field have any use for, I guess for the entire region, I would assume?
It has use for the region as far west as the C-18 Canal, Locksatchie Slough. Beyond that, for example, in the Avenir area and the Ancient Tree area, we're bulk purchasing water from Palm Beach County Water Utilities and then retail selling it to residents of Palm Beach Gardens in Avenir.
Okay.
So, so you'll know, all of our well fields, we have four of them, and that's not counting our Florida and Aquifer, our saline well field, all of our well fields are interconnected. So what benefits, one of Seacoast's customers benefits all with regard to water supply.
So you said that you would expect if the commercial properties, either one of the commercial properties were placed there and Seacoast had access to some of the property to, to drill some wells, you would expect a 30-year lifeline, lifetime of accessible water?
Right.
Whereas if you were able to drill additional wells throughout the property, you would expect to see more, up to 100 years?
Longer than 100 years.
Okay. And the property that you would put there, if truly there were gonna be wells scattered throughout the property, would it be, have any access to the public, or would it strictly be fenced off?
Access, public access needs to be limited to public water supply facilities. However, that's not to say that the public could not utilize the property for limited purposes. For example, the city of Palm Beach Gardens, as was mentioned earlier, is already doing fire rescue training on our well field that exists to the north there. So the point, the point of my saying that is that the presence of the well field doesn't completely preclude some public use, but unrestricted public use would probably be undesirable. I wish I could be more specific than that.
No, that's fine. So the wells would be kind of fenced off, but the property may be accessible for some type of
They're fenced off.
Passive park or something like that?
That's, well, they're fenced off presently.
Correct.
And as far as passive, passive park with unrestricted public access, we'd have to think about that very carefully. None of our well fields are used for that purpose presently, but that doesn't mean it can't happen.
Well, with the school across the, across the C-17 Canal and having a little bit of green space nearby is something that might be good for ecological or environmental or educational purposes for the locals.
See the benefit of that.
Thank you.
Carl.
I'm gonna wanna interact with all of you to get me where I need to be to make a vote on this, so, but Mr. Bishop, thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
That's a large piece of property there. Well, how many wells would you wanna put on that?
Only the three that we have now, or their replacements. Three at a time is about all that site can handle.
In that immediate, immediate areas, you had mentioned where the firefighters practice in another part of Seacoast, which is literally next door to it.
Yes.
How many wells are in that area?
I think we have four over there. It's a much larger piece of property, actually. That's, we have retained nine acres over there, I think is the figure, and we've leased maybe five to the city. Or no, I've got that reversed. We've retained five as a pump station and leased nine to the city for firefighter training. So this is a six-acre parcel, so the proportion's about right.
Okay, so Seacoast owns most of that land over there already, correct? In that area, like north of Hilltop?
North of Hilltop, yes.
And is there a reason why you can't put, put more wells in the area that you already own?
Yes, because the ones that we have are, are as close as you can hydrogeologically put them together. If you put them too close together, they start to interfere with one another, and that adversely affects their operation, and it causes the, the formation from which they draw to block much quicker.
So you're saying on the nine acres you have, right, did you say nine?
No, I think it's nine.
Okay, whatever it is. You cannot put any more wells in the existing land that you have there?
We haven't really looked into it in that much depth, but we haven't had the need to.
And, and how long do the four wells that you have to the north, how many more years of operation do you estimate out of those wells?
10.
And wells are not sustainable on any level, or they all, they, they all dry out?
What happens is their performance, the formation from which they draw water tends to plug over the course of time. You can redevelop them, you can refurbish them, and sometimes you can restore them to like new performance, but not frequently. Over the course of time, they plug so much that they just need to be replaced.
How many more wells in the area, whether it's in Gardens or whether it's not, do you have future plans on drilling wells?
Well, at present, we have 35 superficial aquifer wells in the approximate depth that I mentioned before, about 150, 170 feet. And then we have, one, two, three, four Florida and Aquifer wells that are down around 1,400 feet pumping saline water, which retreat through low-pressure reverse osmosis. We have two more of those saline wells that we're drilling right now.
Okay, so again, asking that question again, how many more wells do you have the ability to drill in the, say, next 10 years if the Hilltop area is gonna dry up there?
Are you, can I interpret that for a minute?
Sure.
Rim, do you have any property anywhere else where you could put additional wells?
Only replacement for existing wells. The answer is no.
So you have no inventory?
Nope. Not real estate inventory.
So how long, the, the wells that you already have, how long will the wells sustain your service area over the next years?
We're estimating maybe 50 years, because different wells drilled in different areas perform differently and last for different periods of time. Again, it's kinda hard to tell you specifically.
I understand that.
You understand what I'm saying?
What do we do in 50 years?
Well, I, I, we'll probably have to go to a saltwater, you know, Florida and Aquifer, the deeper Florida and Aquifer, excuse me, more expensive water, but that, that 50 years is a number off the top of my head, may last longer than that.
I know. That's it for now on that one, thank you.
Maureen? Go ahead, Rochelle.
Where is Seacoast as far as the county and Congress right now? Have you had discussions with them about the extension of the road and the property?
We have, we have. Yes, and we're, we're aware what the county's plan is, what the alignment is, and with a few, with a little cooperation from the county in terms of funding relocation of existing Seacoast facilities that are in existing easements, that's their expense when they do that, with a little cooperation from them, which we anticipate, we fully anticipate, that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, that would happen anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
Because there are wells that are already existing.
Right. Well, the wells aren't moving as a result of the Congress having a line, just to be clear.
Okay. So whatever, whatever you have to work out with them that involves their, their funding, whatever is going, would be happening whether this property goes to you or not?
It absolutely would, yes.
Okay, so there's no problem with where that road needs to go and your plan for future wells on this property?
There is no problem with that.
Okay.
I've got a follow-up question, and just so you know, there is some self-interest here. No one needs tennis lessons more than me. But, so if we actually built the tennis facility, what would, what would you do?
We would, when they came in for service, we would do that which we do with all developers who come into service in Palm Beach Gardens or any part of our service area, and that is, we will require them to get, to grant larger easements than presently exist for the well, and that will get us to that, that, that was built into the assumption of the 35 years or the 30-year figure that I gave you, that they will be granting larger easements when they come in to develop the property. All developers do that, if there's a well site on the property. So we'll, we'll just do the best we can with whatever we have. But again, that's the difference between owning and controlling the property and getting an easement, which is essentially just the right to use somebody else's property.
Thank you.
I, I don't have any further questions, if you have anything, at this moment. Maybe that'll come up, but I'd like to hear from the other two and maybe
Thank you very much.
Bring each separately.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may have a clarification, if I would, from Mr. Bishop. Mr. Bishop, is, your last statement is, is that saying that there could be room, if there's development on the property of either one of the two other bidders? If there's development on that property, there is potential for you to locate wells on that property anyway?
There, there is that potential. As a matter of fact, all the, the other bidders here have been in, as I mentioned, have been in to see us, not once, but several times in some cases, and they have offered different plans that allow expanded well sites, just as they said they did. Problem with that is, that gets us to 35 years, maybe. So yes, I mean, they, I think they fully intend to grant larger easements. As a matter of fact, I think that was in the backup documentation that was presented to you.
Just wanted to clear, clarify that for the record, that there still would be property available for the wells that you intend to put on anyway, wherever, wherever they may go on the property.
A little extra.
Okay.
What's the difference between the 35 years, though, and the 100 years?
The difference between the two is, in the case of the 35, we're using their property under their terms, with their conditions, with wells placed where they want them, so that they don't interfere with their private development. The case of the 100-plus years, we own the property, we decide where the wells go and how many of them are going to be there and where they're gonna be drilled and when. And, and what happens, just to give you a little bit more detail on that, if we own and control the entire six acres, which we hope to do, we can move, when, when a well does need to be redrilled, we can move over 20 feet, or 30 feet, or 50 feet, however distant, whatever distance our hydrogeologists say we have to move over, drill another well. When that one goes, we move over another 50 feet, or whatever the number is, drill another well. That goes on for quite a period of time on a piece of property that has the perimeter that this piece of property has. We can drill a lot of wells over a period of time. I, I suppose I ought to repeat, we're not talking about drilling a lot of wells all at once. These are replacement wells for the ones that are there now, whenever they go bad.
But Rim, if we have four wells on the north property, north of Hilltop, and it's nine acres, then why can't we go 20 feet and, and drill another well there?
Because you can't have another well within 20 feet of an active well. Are you talking about when, when it's replaced?
That was my thought process, was to continue to do a replacement well on the nine acres that you already have, which you can do.
Yes, we can, for the wells that are on that nine acres.
So that, that nine acres has the potential of having how many wells after one dries up after another, over how many years?
Both of those sites have all the wells that they can handle at any given time today.
But you have the potential to move 20 feet as one dries up and build another well?
Yes, sir.
So you only have four on nine acres, you could have another 50, 60 wells there over 100 years. That's a throw, throwing it out there. Something like that.
Theoretically.
So we have plenty of room to build wells on the nine acres you have to, to be sustainable as one dries up, we can move 20 feet on nine acres.
And, and replace the wells that are on that nine acres? Yes, sir.
That's just replacing the water that we have now, though, with the city growing. He said one, one well affects, you know, the ability to have water affects the whole system.
Understood.
So we're growing, so what we have now, that sustains us now, is not gonna sustain us in the future. So the need for, for increasing the number of wells makes sense.
Rim, have there been any other opportunities to purchase land in Palm Beach Gardens?
Well, we just bought a lot over on Ilic Circle South, a house that was under code enforcement and went to foreclosure. We purchased that, but it wasn't for water supply purposes. The reason for that purchase was that the largest lift station, the one, sewage pump station that serves more residents than any other in Palm Beach Gardens, was almost impossible to get to, because when the city was laid out, they put this massive pump station in the back of the property along a canal where it's dangerous to bring our large trucks in to refuel the generator and stuff like that. Short answer was, no, we, we don't know of any other property.
At this time, but there is, there is possible opportunity in the future.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's probably also useful to remember, when it, when, when those opportunities arise, if they don't happen to be near where an existing well field is, then they're virtually useless to us. We need to have the wells to where we can get power to them, get control wire to them, and, you know, they can operate in tandem with the existing wells that we have. We can't, and, and we'd have to extend pipeline. If it was a mile away, we'd have to run a mile of pipe to get one well in operation. So there's a, there's a practical, practicality involved with that, too.
Rim, that, oh, I'm gonna call it a service station, whatever it is, at Jog Road at the Roundabout out west, the one where the, the treatment plant?
Yes.
There's a, I could be wrong, but is there not a parcel, you have that pool of land that fills up. Isn't there not a parcel of land just directly to the east of that, that's not being used for anything? Is that a possible well area?
There's a lot of real estate out there. The problem is, it's all near the Locksatchie Slough where you will never get a permit to drill a well.
I'm talking about that land specific to your pool area?
Yes.
It's by a berm, and then it's a substantial amount of land that I think is owned by you.
It is, it is owned by us. It's 120 acres.
Is that a well, is that a potential well site?
No, sir, because it's too close to Locksatchie Slough. If you, if you put the well in and you start pumping it, there's a drawdown effect, and that drawdown effect, if it extends far enough outward, will change the hydro period of nearby wetlands and cause damage to our natural resources, so you would never get a permit for that. But there is a lot of real estate there, yes, sir.
So there's other options to look at out that area that might not mess with the Locksatchies?
We have, we have looked at, I've been here 32 years, and we have pretty well exhausted the Palm Beach Gardens, Lake Park, North Palm Beach, South Indiuno Beach, Palm Beach County area. We have worked it over. The last time we went in to renew our permit to withdraw water for public water supply now, for public water supply, essentially the same amount of water that we had been permitted to withdraw for the 15 years previous, it took us seven years just to get approved. And it's because the degree of regulatory protection for, not only against saltwater intrusion, but against wetland degradation and impacts to people's stormwater lakes, aesthetic lakes and things like that, that regulation is much more challenging than it once was, and much more rigorous than it once was.
Thank you.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Would Seacoast have any problem with the clause in, in the contract if it were to go in there, that it could not be resold, that it had to be put in, first right of refusal to the city, should you not use the property? Would Seacoast have any problem with the clause in, in the contract if it were to go in there, that it could not be resold, that it had to be put in, first right of refusal to the city, should you not use the property?
Speaking for Seacoast staff, no. We'd present it, of course, to our Seacoast board, and as far as staff is concerned, we wouldn't have any problem with that at all. That's what we want it for.
Wow.
Thank you.
It is very sobering. Would you gentlemen like to add something to the discussion? And Johan, you, you all will be able to add to the discussion also?
Thank you. We've had several plans for this project, probably fifty, but some of them included the city property, or most of it, for dry retention, which would allow us to build more on our property. And if we put dry retention in this area, then that would not encumber moving the wells around, because it's just dry retention, it's just open space. So we would be willing to do that and, you know, you know, get our project a little bit smaller. In addition, we have agreed to give Seacoast an additional well on our property, which would be further away from their wells, which would be able to obtain water further away from their existing wells. So that gives them an additional well that they wouldn't have. So I think we would request that the council put enough give and take in your resolution to allow the city and Seacoast to work with us, to work something out that benefits Seacoast and benefits the city and benefits us as far as getting the wells, and obviously we would be paying for that dry retention right, which would also help Seacoast.
Am I correct in this, in my addition here? If you, if given the due diligence period and all of the extensions and everything else, we're looking at at least three hundred days to close on your, on your offer? It says here, the inspection period may be extended an additional thirty days, and then six times thereafter for a total of a hundred and eighty, so you've got sixty days, a hundred and eighty days, and then another sixty days down here, we're looking at, the math is high.
That was the offer, but that can be changed, particularly if we're going with dry retention, because then we don't have to worry about the zoning.
And, Rem, yours looked like forty-five days, and Johan, yours looked like a hundred and five days for close, about that, okay. Any questions for Mr. Craig? Wendy, Johan, anything you'd like to add? This is a little different of a structure for us this evening, but, you know, this is also, as a new council, this is the first time we've had something like this, so we're just getting our feet a little wet here, thank you.
Thank you, just to address a question that was raised earlier about why here? You know, as has been mentioned, there's not a lot of available sites in Palm Beach Gardens. Johan would need at least six acres to, to do what he's trying to do here for his academy and with the indoor courts, so this is this place that's available, so that's the reason for why here. And Johan, he and his wife live here in Palm Beach County, in Palm Beach Gardens, they, their children go to school here in Palm Beach Gardens, they're, they're very committed to this area, and they've got an existing academy at PGA National that they'll be potentially moving over to here and can grow it, so if you could talk to them maybe about, you know, the plans that you have and excitement for this.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, I'm Johan Creek, I live at 7797 Maywood Crest Drive, up in, across from Avenue area. I've been in Palm Beach Gardens now for the last two years, so if you don't understand my English, it's because of my parents. I, I've run a tennis academy business for the last ten years, I've run very successful ones in Virginia, Charlotte, North Carolina, and I've always wanted to come back to Florida. I lived in the country of Naples, Florida for thirty-four years, and now I live on this side. The academy business is not your average tennis academy, tennis business, it's a uber income-producing, wide range of businesses get affected. You can imagine if you have twenty, forty international kids that come from different parts of the world, you affect not only airlines, restaurants, real estate sales, rental apartments. The very, very successful academies in the world do hundreds of thousands of dollars per, per court, per year, so it's a wide-ranging business that affects a lot of things that you can think of. I have been at the PGA National Resort in Spal for the past two years, very successfully. I'm hitting numbers in my, less than two years that I've done in five years in Charlotte, North Carolina, which is a much bigger city, but not necessarily a tennis city. And we have been looking to expand our business, and PGA, as you can imagine, with twenty-seven-hundred by default members at the tennis facility, we are trampling on toes, doesn't matter how well we keep, keep our shoes clean for the, for the clubhouse, et cetera. So I've been looking for a spot to land to have a bigger academy. When this opportunity arose, I jumped at it, and we are expecting to set ourselves apart, not only with one of the finest academies in the world, but a boutique one, also offering some, some great benefits to the city and to the citizens, as well as members that want to join. We'll also have an indoor tennis facility, which is at this current moment in time, not a single indoor tennis facility in the whole state of Florida that's privately owned. Balliteri has three of them, there is just nothing like that, so I intend to do that. As you may well know, that pickleball is taking a huge bite out of tennis, and we wanted to do it as a dual-purpose facility, so that when we don't have time on a tennis court, it could be in the evenings, it could be very early in the mornings, we could also convert the tennis courts into pickleball courts very, very easily. So pickleball is taking a huge, huge leap forward, it grows by thirty percent a year, so that's going to be a dual-purpose facility. But may I say this, I'm a son of a sugar farmer in South Africa, I understand water very well, and I love this community, and I hope to be here for a very long time to come, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I do, actually, I do have a question. You have, do you have any additional retail components on that site? Is it just the tennis?
We expect to, to have a restaurant business as well for our members, hopefully with a bar and so forth, so we need to keep these guys staying there and playing and having fun, and especially pickleball, because pickleball is not really a tennis game, it's a very different sport. The, the match play lasts only about fifteen, twenty minutes, so it, it really drives the need for having a social aspect to that, which is obviously a restaurant bar area.
But there's really no public use for, for this? You have to be, you have to be a member?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna have membership and we're gonna have public use, yes.
So then, if you did have a retail component on it, it would be available to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sure.
It's my understanding there's a number of utility easements on the property, are you aware of where they are and how you're going to be able to build in light of all these easements?
Yes, I don't know, I've, can I show you this?
Sure.
We actually have worked with the materials that were provided online, as well as with a surveyor and a land planner to take a look at all of the easements and even the potential road that would come through, and to make sure that we have looked at where we would need to move things. This is just one concept that we drew when we were talking to the investor that Johan will be working with, that is not by any means a final, final thing, but you can see that it does take into account the easements and things that are there.
Wendy, with the other property, they had talked with Seacoast about the potential for putting wells on their property, whatever, you just said that you need six acres for, for this, with the easements, that doesn't leave any potential for additional wells on that property?
We actually hadn't, it had not, this is the first time we're hearing that somebody would actually need additional wells. We did sit down with Seacoast about what their needs were and what they had on that property, to make sure that we were aware of it, to make sure it could work with what we were doing, and we were aware that they would need the expanded easements around it, and so we have worked around that. I don't, I think it's something we'd have to look at, we, we haven't taken into account, and nobody had mentioned to us before that we needed to look at additional wells on that site, so to be honest with you, no, we haven't looked at that, but we certainly were well aware that they would need expanded easements on those wells, that's what we learned when we met with them, and we did incorporate that.
Thank you.
Did you guys do a demographic study to find out where you're gonna, because that's kind of an industrial area up there? Where is everybody going to be coming from?
Well, I have a, I have a fairly decent name in the world of tennis, so if I do something in downtown, it definitely is going to help us, we will not lose any clients, in fact, we will gain some because we're so close to ninety-five. I have a lot of friends in Palm Beach, a lot of friends in Jupiter, so it's a little bit easier for them to get to me rather than PGA. So we will definitely gain a lot of things, a lot of clients and members.
Have you done a study?
I have not done a study, no. Yeah, the, the existing clients that I have at PGA will definitely come over there, because a lot of our clients come, come from this area, from the local market. May I also say that due to the fact that I don't have access to the PGA tennis courts from seven o'clock in the morning till at least one o'clock, I leave a tremendous amount of business on, away from me, because I have no access to the internationals. You can imagine, if I bring a kid from Russia to come over here, the next Sharapova, the next Roger Federer type player, they want to play tennis at nine o'clock already, or eight o'clock in the morning, so I have zero business till one o'clock.
Till like ten o'clock at night?
Well, not-
Or whatever, I don't care.
If they work that hard, that would be an interesting-
So this will be a lit facility, too?
Pardon?
Probably a, a lighted facility, hasn't it?
Oh, yeah, everything will be the state-of-the-art latest LED lights.
How much are you going to put into the property?
Oh, multi-millions, probably close to ten million.
And can you see your way anywhere to work with Seacoast to, to make sure the future of Palm Beach Gardens has water, is there, is this workable somehow?
Look, a tennis court costs a hundred thousand dollars, a pickleball court costs thirty thousand dollars. If there's access that needs to be done, you know, for a pipe replacement or something like that, a tennis court, we're not going to build near the pipes or near that easement. But a pickleball court, you know, hey, I got insurance, if something happens, I'm going to have to, you know, have them go at it, but I, I think we would definitely work with easements with, with Seacoast and work the best we can to make sure that everybody has water. I would hate to flush my toilet and nothing happens.
We have plenty of water out west where you live, you're fine.
Well, the dilemma before all of us is, do we put money in front of water? And that's really, you know, do we take your proposal of a hundred and, you know, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand, which is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand more than, than Seacoast, or a million and fifty, which is a hundred and eighty-five thousand more than Seacoast, do we take, do we say yes to you because we, you know, we're going to get paid more money, which we don't even, where, where would that money go, by the way? Would that go to resident, would that go into recreation impact? Where would that go? Whatever, whatever we sell it for, where is that money going?
That would be a recommendation of staff that we consider the fact that in ninety-seven the property was purchased for five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of recreational pursuits, would be our recommendation, that whatever funds are generated from the sale of this property, we put in a Recreation Capital Improvements Fund for expansion and development of our recreation capital. It's a one-time revenue shot, it's not recurring, so therefore, generally speaking, our, our philosophy is to put it in a one-time expenditure item, which would be CIP for recreation.
Okay, so then if we sell to Seacoast, there is no tax benefit to the city? Because obviously they're a nonprofit entity, and if we sell to either of these other, we would have a tax, tax benefit? So there is a lot for us to consider, and this is a, a very difficult decision to make, because as I said, thirty years for a well versus a hundred years for a well, and what are the opportunities in the future, what other land might be? You said that you could not do, it would be easier to do new wells next to old wells because the utilities were in place, the electric was in place, getting to the facility was in place, so the other areas, because you said, you had said you had thirty-five wells, correct? Okay, where are those wells?
We have four wellfields, there's what we call the North Palm Beach Wellfield, sorry about that, that's this one, and Richard Road, you know, the property to the north, that's one wellfield. We have the Burma Road Wellfield, which is a wellfield that's arrayed along the west side of the C-17 Canal next to Costco and south. And then we have the Palm Beach Gardens Wellfield, which is around Burns Road area, and then we have our most productive wellfield, which is the Hood Road Wellfield, which is located just south of Hood Road along the east side of the Turnpike.
I have a follow-up question.
Great, and I have one for Wendy, too.
In terms of financially, since we're talking numbers, tell us why financially it'd be better, it'd be, what benefits can the city accrue financially from selling this to you?
Avoiding finding much more expensive water supply when this water supply is no longer useful, in millions, three million, off the top of my head, because right now, what we would have to do, if we could find a place to put a well, is drill down to the brackish Florida and aquifer. Those wells cost about a million and a half dollars each. These wells, the replacements for the wells we're talking about today, are about a half a million each. And the water's brackish, once you get it, so it's more expensive to treat, excuse me.
Can you please get a little closer to your microphone, thank you.
Would we be, would we be responsible as citizens of sixty percent of the cost?
That's correct. Sixty percent today, and that's based on the proportion of water sold within our respective jurisdictions that we serve.
Now, follow up on that, when you take salt water out of the well, you're also talking about a desalinization plant that goes with it?
Correct.
Along the lines of what Jupiter had to put in, and that's millions in itself to add the desalinization plant?
That's correct.
In addition to taking the salt water out of the ground, which costs more?
That's true, we do have infrastructure, we already treat some water, some brackish Florida and water, in one half of our water treatment plant through low-pressure reverse osmosis, so that would have, but that would have to be expanded, so you're correct.
And I have one more question for Mr. Creek and Wendy. You had said there wasn't much other place property available, I just wanted to know if you've talked with the city staff and manager about potential, other potential places, because I really would love to see his tennis facility in the city, I definitely think it would, it would be a great fit for us.
We have had many conversations with Mr. Ferris and city staff, trying to, to look at different things. You know, you've just put a proposal out on-
RFP went out yesterday, yeah.
You've just put a proposal out for an RFP. I think, though, given the nature of that and, and the way you're looking for, because it is, you know, city land and what you're looking for-
Public use.
The fact that we're looking at a private club as, you know, and, and an academy, our understanding is it may not fit the need of, of what you're looking for at this point.
Of a public-private partnership?
Right, so, I mean, not to say that, you know, it's impossible, but it's, it's also a different size, that's fourteen acres of usable space, twenty-two acres total, that's, there's a big jump from six acres to that in terms of cost, and, and, you know, tennis academy, while Johan will do a great job with it, and it's been very successful, it is a tennis academy, and it's, it's a, you know, you've got to look at the cost of something versus the, you know, what will come in, so, but we have talked to both Kumra and Mr. Ferris, and talked to about, you know, where else could we go? As Johan mentioned, he's currently out at PGA National, but waiting, for example, for a possibility that may be out at Avenue, you're talking years down the road, and this is something that he's looking to do for his business, this is his livelihood, and something he needs to do sooner, so Palm Beach Gardens is absolutely the first choice, but if, you know, it is absolutely the first choice, but, you know, if he has to go elsewhere, then, then we'll have to do, look, look elsewhere, but we would prefer to be here.
Have you talked to the people at Avenue?
Yes, we have.
Long way away.
The timeline, the timeline just didn't fit with what needs are for myself at this point in time, and with the, with the issues with PGA, we all know that it's for sale, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit of a risky road for me, because obviously I have, I have a, I have a very, very loyal clientele, even if it's just local market, but once you go into the international market, it's really dicey, I mean, and in fact, that's really where the big money lies, in, in, in the academy business, is the kids that come, that come to school, they get their I-20, they go to the Y schools, they go to different parts of the, the, the school system, so like I said before, you know, it's, it's a simplistic view to look at it, oh, it's just tennis, no, it's, it's a huge business.
Johan, your other facilities that you have around the country, what are they in size? You said you had one in Charlotte?
Yes, ma'am.
Before, earlier, not currently.
What were the sizes of them, I mean acreage-wise?
I was actually leasing courts at clubs, so it was, some clubs had six indoor courts with eighteen outdoor courts, so that's how I did it, and with six- with eighteen outdoor courts, so that's how I did it. And with six courts, I was outgrossing the clubs that have eighteen, twenty courts per year.
I think, Mark, you had some additional questions?
I'm just listening. I'm just, I'm just happy to sit and listen to all the debate. But my comments about the tennis facility, and Johan, I'm not a tennis player, but growing up, one of my best friends was, and you were on the circuit at the time, so...
Don't give our age away, please.
Yeah, your hairline's about the same, but, but aside from that, I absolutely think that a tennis facility in the city would be, would be wonderful. As, and my kids are travel soccer players, so I'm everywhere around the state, and there's very few facilities in the state that is going to match what we're trying to do here, not just for the locals, but for, you know, a real economic growth of sports. And, you know, I'm saddened sometimes to see that tennis isn't really where it was fifteen, twenty years ago, and it'd be nice to see it go back up. I just looked at this particular property, and it looks like we're really kind of jamming it into a small spot. I would prefer to see it somewhere in the city that's more central, just because I think it would be something that would add to the value of the, of the region. And I understand the limitations, and I understand what you're saying.
We look everywhere.
I know, I know. And there's not, there's not like land popping up all over the place. But, but that's my one comment. It's not, you know, the question here isn't so much do we believe in what you can offer, because I'm a hundred percent supportive of any type of activities and sports. It's wonderful for the kids. It's great for the local economy. I just question whether or not this is the best spot for it. You know, you're drawing people in from all over the place, and we'd like them to see some of the best parts of our city. And not that this isn't a valuable part of our city, but it's not the same as what we're doing here at the District Park. And so, that's my only comment on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Don't go nowhere.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'll go. Although, the good part is you can go to Home Depot and then go play tennis. Just saying, Mark. But anyway, but six acres is large. And I'm not debating my fellow council member, but that's still large enough for you to...
Absolutely.
Put it in there.
So, we, what we presented to you shows that it's a...
Yeah.
Twelve-court facility.
And how many people are you going to have in there a day, you think? And children and families and...
I have over, I have, yes. I have over a hundred kids in my program, and I have six courts at PGA. Can you imagine what I could do with twelve hours a day with twelve courts, plus, you know, pickleball, plus what you can interchange and do things with an indoor facility? It's, it's...
And then, of course, we'll work in the future with the easements that Seacoast is going to take.
Yes.
What they're going to take anyway, which is thirty-five percent for water. Rem, I got more questions for you. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so we have four well sites: Burma, Richard, Hood Road, and what's the other one?
We call it Palm Beach Gardens.
Palm Beach Gardens.
Used to be called Lilac Street.
Okay, so how large is Burma? How many acres?
How many acres? It's, it's easements along the west right-of-way of the C-17 Canal. The easements are probably all maybe twenty-five by twenty-five, and I think there's five of them. There's five wells over there. Five wells in there.
And how, how much room does a well take? Not that much?
The slab itself and the hole in the ground and the piping above grade, probably not more than fifteen by fifteen.
Okay, and then we can move twenty feet over when that one dries up and drill another one?
In some cases.
In some cases?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, but how large is the Burma property? And how, we have five wells on that, so I'm just trying to think way in the future. Because I want, I want water for hundreds of years.
Sure.
So, on Burma, we have five.
We have five separate easements on property that we don't own there. Yes, sir.
So, how many more wells in the future can we put on that?
We can probably re-drill each one of those wells at least once. But having said that, I will tell you that that Burma Road Well Field is not productive. It's, they're nowhere near the quality wells that we have.
How long does a well last?
Average of fifteen years, a superficial aquifer well like these.
Okay, so we can put five more on Burma. On Richard, which is the... Yeah, he did. He said we could, yeah, he did.
You can get, you can get replacements.
Please put your microphone on.
Okay.
He said we could refurbish, he could refurbish five wells that are already not producing.
When the, when the wells that are there fail in each one of those easements I just described to you, we can put one more next to it and abandon that one.
Which should be for another fifteen years.
Another fifteen years, yes.
So, you are putting another well next to it? That's what he said?
It's an existing well that you're replacing. You're not adding additional wells. And that's what I think his point is, is that they've already kind of mapped out their areas and have already calculated for moving. Tell me if I'm wrong, but...
No, it's correct.
As, as one well dries, you're going to add another one, but you can't add another one right now.
That is correct.
So, you can't add more to what's already there. All you're going to do is, the well sites that they already have are just going to be able to be replenished and replaced, providing the same level of water services that you already are providing.
Hopefully.
The whole purpose of this property in Seacoast mind is that they will have the opportunity to add more volume of water for another hundred years. That's, that's the difference, so...
And that's where I'm trying to get, is between PG, PBG, Burma, Richard, Hood. If we have four wells on Richard, right, and we have nine acres, and we can move them twenty feet every time somebody, every time one of them dries up, do we not have the potential for wells for fifty years going forward?
To replace those four wells, yes, sir. We do.
But we can do that on, on Hood Road. And Hood Road, how many wells are there?
I think we have thirteen wells on Hood Road. Is that right, Brandon? I think it's thirteen. Yeah, thirteen wells at Hood Road.
Okay, so right now, and I'm not trying to sway anybody anyway, but we have the ability to sustain water for the community for a hundred years or more?
I'm not sure that I could certify that as absolutely correct, because I haven't done that level of analysis on all of our wellfields.
It seems like we got multiple, if we only, if we have four acres on Richard and we move twenty feet and put another well in for fifteen more years, how many wells can you put on nine acres? An awful lot.
On that one site, yes, sir.
As what Mark was saying before, though, that's just going to sustain us where we are. We're growing. The city's still growing. And our needs, our needs are going to be growing. We are growing. We're growing out west, and, and we have other areas, and we're going to be growing up in places and more people.
Where's the water going to come from, for Avenue?
For Avenue, we're bulk purchasing from Palm Beach County Water Utilities.
And that's where Avenue in the future will, will, will get its water?
That's correct.
So, it's not going to come from Richard Road?
That is correct.
Or Burma, or PGA, or Hood?
That is correct.
But Alton will.
Alton will.
I'm just trying to ask the hard questions.
Yeah, and, and...
I'm trying to just put it all out there.
Oh, I know. And some of the, some of the redevelopment areas that are now low may be high. We don't know what kind of growth we're going to end up doing. No, not talking about the tennis.
Let me ask you this.
Talking about other properties.
I think we're winding down, so let's...
Yeah, okay. Now, we need a debate between us.
Okay.
You can come.
In terms of your offer...
Yes, sir.
Is it possible that you could increase your offer?
I don't have any authority to go above the appraised value that was presented to us as a public entity.
Is it possible to do that?
As I'm standing here today, I don't have that authority, and I don't have a board meeting until the twenty-sixth of this month.
Would you make a recommendation to increase it?
If I had some feeling as to what that would be, yeah.
Well, well, I'm good. Does anyone have any more comments? I think we should, so, I'm going to, yes, I see you waving hands. Would you like to come up and say something?
Thank you. Have we neglected you?
I would also like to point out that on the city property, once the road is in, there's only 5.2 acres available, still encumbered by the wells. This is one of our site plans for commercial development. See if I've got it.
That's right. That's in our package.
Yes. This was not in, this was in your packet, I think. But there's dry retention here, there's dry retention here, 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 here.
Can you please speak closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, you're talking about moving wells around on six acres, and we have twenty-three acres. And we can spread these wells out across here depending on who the various tenants are. So, we would like the opportunity, or you to give us the opportunity, to work with Seacoast and the city to see if we can come up with a plan that improves the ability to increase the wells. And depending on what we're doing here, maybe we can do it, instead of granting one additional well, maybe we can grant two. But we would be willing to sit down and negotiate with Seacoast and the city as we determine exactly what our development is, as to where we can put wells. And that would provide the city with much further into the city, much, much further into the future for wells.
So, you're basically saying that you'd be willing to utilize the entire property, not just that six-acre parcel for additional well space, if Seacoast were able to find additional space within there that could...
Well, we couldn't...
You have a lot of parking.
We couldn't obviously do the entire property, but I...
No.
But we could find spots on the property and have multiple spots where they can move them around, yeah.
That's what I was referring to. So, wouldn't, you wouldn't allow Seacoast just on that six-acre parcel, but potentially you could work a plan through the entire twenty-two acres or whatever, the entire space?
That is, that's correct.
Is that a possibility, Mr. Bishop, to utilize more than just the adjacent property, but property extending further south?
There are setback requirements, even when we're dealing with dry retention. We have no idea whether a site that they might choose that would suit the land plan would yield water supply. What we do know is that the six acres that we're on right now is an excellent-producing wellfield. So, and plus, you would have to extend pipeline, wire, utilities farther away. There are a lot of what-ifs that I just can't answer for you as I'm standing here right now.
Well, actually, I'm, I think I'm going to have, I'm going to say a couple words. And our charge here tonight is to give the city manager direction. My inclination is to go with our best offer, which is the tennis. And I suggest we take the tennis offer and charge our city manager to negotiate the best deal, which includes sites for Seacoast for future use. So, it, and if that doesn't come to pass, if there is something that doesn't work out, then we take the next highest bid. That would be my suggestion. Does that make sense?
I, as the representative on the Water Resources Task Force, have a problem with the public utility being beholden to a commercial project and not knowing what the future's going to hold, and not knowing that that water's going to be there when we need it. I think securing our water supply for the future needs to come first, and that the greater public good would be served in this instance by not going with the money and by leaving the property as is and securing our water.
And if, if, well, the charge would be for the city manager to broker a deal with Seacoast and the tennis, so that there would be availability?
From what they said, they're, the plan that they've got's going to take more property. I would love to see the city manager work with the tennis facility to come up with a location to put the tennis facility that works for everybody. But I, I can't see it in that spot. I mean, when Seacoast is there and the property is adjacent to their well and would be an extension, I can't see putting a tennis facility in that location.
Even if the city manager were to broker a deal between the two entities? That's what we're charged, that's what we're charging, and if it can't happen, then we, we come back to the drawing board. That's my suggestion, anyway. Okay, somebody's talking. Somebody has to talk.
I thought we were going respectfully one at a time, and I didn't want to go mid-thought, but I'm going to say my thought.
Okay, go first.
Go ahead.
I even said at the last council meeting, you know, my charge here when I got elected was parks, children and family, we say it nonstop. There's, there's, he wants six acres. You own twenty-three. So, there's another potential land deal going on that the city doesn't have to be involved in. And maybe Seacoast can ask him for four, five, six acres out there. It's all, it's not just six acres. There's a lot of land out there that can be used as well. And I think we've, we've scratched mathematically that we could have decades and decades, if not a hundred years or more, of water from Burma, Richard, PBG, and Hood Road. Who knows what reverse osmosis is going to bring in a hundred years from now? I mean, no one's going to be driving then. So, you know, there is another seventeen acres out there that is just laying dormant and has been forever. So, I'm still leaning towards the benefit of the community, the benefit of the families, the benefit of the children, the jobs, the tax base. And, you know, honestly, it's a little industrial, so it might be nice to mix some family and children and stuff in that area.
It's a hard decision.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not completely anywhere yet, but those are my, those are the thoughts that are rising to the top.
They do know scientifically about the salinization and what happens when wells fail, and how you have to get water and what your options are. So, it's not totally just out of the air.
I know, but I keep going back with...
And the future, the thirty years, I mean, his first statement really got me, that, I mean, with what we have now, even if they replace the ones as they fail, we've got thirty to thirty-five years.
I disagree with that.
The only way to get a hundred years is to go with more.
Each well lasts fifteen years, and they're twenty feet, you know, one, one dries up, they drill another one. It lasts fifteen years.
I don't want to challenge the science. I'm going to trust, I'm going to, I'm going to trust the science. You know, I'm not a real scientist, but I like science and I think like a scientist does. So, I'm going to trust the science, and I'm going to trust the projections of Seacoast. I don't know what the future holds. I mean, look, I've lived in Florida for, gosh, twenty-five years now. And when I first got to Florida, they had the whole Everglades thing figured out and the water solution figured out twenty-five years ago, and look where we are today. So, I don't really have a lot of faith in saying that we don't know what the future's going to bring, because something better might come along when it comes to government, sorry, that's us, and, and their promises to provide services and water and what have you. So, when I first read this and I first looked at it and I thought about it and I slept over it, my first instinct was to protect the water supply. I, I trust everything that everybody said. I'm still going to stick to that. And my only, my only ask is that perhaps we can negotiate a better deal, and perhaps we can also, I, I would like to see a passive park on the space. And I'm sure there's a way that the wells can be protected, and yet we can have a walking path, a little bench, and looking over and having some access. And I know we're giving away money. I understand the value of, of the tax base, and I'm trying not to give away tax dollars to anything other than this. But this is, this is a perfect example, in my opinion, of a parcel of land that we can protect for, for, for the future water supply. And that's my, my take. Thank you.
Okay. I think that we need to protect access to the water supply for our children, our grandchildren. I think that Ren pointed out the economics of it in a, in a way that it's beneficial economically for us to go with his proposal. I also want to point out, we have a tennis facility in the gardens where we're just about to spend three-point-two million dollars. And I don't know what the impact of this will be on that. I would like to authorize Ron to negotiate the best deal he can negotiate with Seacoast and see if we can pick up a few more thousand dollars or see how we can do with that. I've heard he's a pretty tough negotiator, so I'm going to go, I would go with the Seacoast bid as well.
Rem, I did have, you, you did say something that was you were not authorized to go over the appraised value. The appraised value on this property is one-point-seven million.
Seacoast had the same appraiser appraise the same property, but with different assumptions. The principal differences between the one that the city obtained and the one that Seacoast obtained was that Seacoast did not tell the appraiser, assume that rezoning is going to occur, because you don't need to rezone it if you leave it as a wellfield. So, that was a legitimate assumption for us to give the appraiser. The other one was that there was an assumption that certain easements would be abandoned that exist on the property, and that has never been Seacoast's intention. We have the easements. We secured the easements. Some of them were difficult to secure, but we got them, and we're, we're not ready to let them go easily. So, we told the appraiser that. So, when he came back with those, that different set of assumptions, the value of the property was radically different. And that's the difference between our, well, that is our offer. We didn't mess around with offering the city less than what the appraiser said the property was worth. We offered the city exactly what the appraiser said the property was worth.
The property is worth what, what people are willing to pay for it.
Exactly.
So, you know, an appraisal is an appraisal, but you have offers that are higher. So, that's, that's the conundrum that we face as... So that's the conundrum that we face as elected officials, trying to protect the tax dollars of the residents and try to do the best we can. So I understand that your appraisal may have been one thing, but you have to look at where we're at here today, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it seems that the consensus of the council would be to accept the Seacoast offer. That's what I'm hearing.
No, I'm, yes, I'm gonna make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. If you could just maybe amend the motion, we have an amendment.
Sure, I'll amend the motion. Let me just get my paper out here, so I've got it. I would make, amend the motion, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations with Seacoast Utilities, to see if we can get the best possible monetary offer, and to get other conditions that are acceptable to our city.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion?
How can I interpret this, to put this language in here?
Do we have city manager, we have some more discussion?
I just want a clarification, that I would be executing a letter of interest, and do subsequent contracts, agreements, required forms, and bring that contract back to the city council for execution. And I don't know what expectations you have of additional compensation. I think you've just heard that there isn't any, so I will go through the motions and do what we can.
Sure, he'll take it back to the board. So that's my motion, we've got a second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and so we are going with Seacoast. We are gonna have the city manager issue a letter of intent? Okay. All right, may I have a...
All in favor?
I know. You guys, let me... I know, I know.
Football's on.
All those in favor, aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your efforts. Water does trump all. Thank you. Okay, I think, are we done? Items for council action and discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
Item for, I'm sorry about the football, guys. We've all been getting notices and articles about what's going on with the county and the Bears Club. I would like to ask the city manager and staff if my fellow council members agree to draw up a resolution for the October 4th meeting. Are we sure? Well, it was an idea just to draw up a resolution that we would like the county commission to support their staff recommendation and not accept a payment for that pristine piece of property that's in the Bears Club. I think it sets a dangerous precedent. I mean, it's, by law, it's protected, and to, nothing that we have environmentally in the way of protected, preserved, would mean anything if the county goes ahead and accepts money for that piece of property.
I do have had, I have had discussions with several county officials, and I believe that it's not going to pass. I don't even, even Ms. Marcus is rethinking her position, from what I've been told, so I, I don't know if this is something we wanna wade into.
Should we do something just in case to have it for the meeting?
I wrote a letter to all of our county commissioners and spoke to a couple of them, voicing my opinion, and I think that's something that would be sufficient if, I mean, I'm obviously very in favor of what you're saying, and I agreed with you, and I wrote my letter to the county commissioners, and one responded, Hal responded, which was nice.
Did you send it to Jupiter, too?
I sent it to all county commissioners.
I mean, to the Jupiter Town Council as well.
I did not send it to Jupiter Town Council. I sent it only to the county commission, because that's who was voting on it, or potentially were going to. I got a response, and they tabled it, so we can do a resolution, but it may not even be...
They're coming up for a vote, I think it was postponed to October 16th.
October 16th. It's supposedly coming back on the agenda, but we'll see.
Supposedly Karen doesn't even wanna go to county.
Well, I mean, it's good news that it's, might not go forward. So, well, I'll go with whatever you guys think is the best thing to do. I'm sending my own letter as well.
We can discuss on October 1st.
We can, okay, if there's time to discuss it at the next meeting.
If we need to do a resolution on the 1st, we can too, right?
Ron, Ron, you're giving us, no, we can't just do a resolution on the fly.
That's why I wanted...
I would have to have time, prepare a resolution, put it on the agenda for October 4th, because it's on the county commission agenda on the 16th. So if you're going to take a council position and vote on that, it has to be done on October 4th meeting.
Is anybody on the council for the proposal? Is everybody on the same page as far as supporting the staff at the county, that this would be a bad precedent to go with?
I'm on record stating that already, so...
Guidance? Ron or Abby, do you have any some guidance?
I mean, you can definitely, we can definitely prepare a resolution, if you want us to go forward and do that, and you'll obviously have an opportunity to, you know, discuss it again at the October 4th meeting, and then make a motion if you wanna have that resolution go forward to the county commission.
I think we should do that safely.
You wanna draft it now and then discuss it the 4th?
I would have, yeah, that's what they would do. Well, that's what, that's what they, exactly, that's what they would do. They would have it, and if it all goes away, then we don't have to do anything on the 4th.
What's your thought?
I have serious problems with the proposal. That being said, I'm not gonna tell the county how they should run their government. I can speak to them as a private citizen, but I'm not gonna tell how, Valashia, how he's supposed to do his job, and I would resent it if the county told us how to do our job. I mean, we'll do...
They're gonna try to tell us how to name the park.
Exactly.
Well, we don't take it well, and I don't think they're gonna take it any better. And the bottom line is, I don't wanna be telling, you can do what you want, but I don't wanna be telling the county, as a council, what they should do. I've talked to Hal about this as well, and I've expressed my feelings about it. But that being said, I'm not gonna be telling other bodies of government, as a body of government ourselves, what we should do.
That's fair, too.
Every resolution we've done has been...
No, but it's a process. So... I understand what you're saying, Michelle, and I feel very passionate about what you're saying, too. There's a couple reasons why, I don't know if it's absolutely necessary to put a resolution out there. One, from what I've heard, and Maria's reinstated here, it looks like there's a lot of questions about that already, so, number one. Number two, as a private citizen, and, you know, as a council person, who, you know, we have residents that live across the street from that property, and they're not happy about it, so certainly you can speak on their behalf, as I mentioned, a few people. So, you know, do we need to do a resolution? I don't know. I would be happy just to keep, keep the pressure on from behind the scenes and see if that's adequate.
Ron, do you have any thoughts on this that you wanna share?
I am...
I'm here to serve at your pleasure. Whatever the council wants me to do, I'm willing to do.
I'm in concert with you.
I don't think that, you know, this council takes a position on political situations statewide, countywide, municipal-wide, on a regular basis. So taking a position on an issue, I don't necessarily think that you have to tell a county how to do their business, but if you choose to say that this policy decision, you know, and we have an opinion on a policy decision, I think you do that all the time. You do that through the Florida League of Cities in your legislative proposals, and how you adopt your resolutions, you do it with, recently with the mandates, all the time. So if that's your pleasure, by all means, we're here to help you do that. If you, on this instance, do not wish to proceed that way, then that's fine. That is your policy decision.
I concur with Mark and Matthew on this one, so...
All right, I'll send my letters privately, as you did, and hope for the best.
And it's effective, coming from you personally, it's effective.
I mean, I had a sit-down with Hal today, so that was my takeaway from that, was that, you know, staff was, staff has a very strong argument, and a lot of the commission are listening to staff.
Right, if you have relationships, as we all have, with our county commissioners, you can talk to them and make suggestions, just as they can make suggestions to us.
Yep.
Okay.
All right?
That's fine.
Okay, so, any more items for council action or discussion?
Yeah, I got one that's gonna take about 45 minutes to talk about.
I thought you said there was football.
I think that was 40 minutes ago, let's go.
Are you done?
I've been done.
Abby, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, so, we are adjourned.